This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, Mr. Franco, do you have a flag?
Oh, hey, look, there's one.
Well, Dave, why don't you, I should say, Franco, why don't you start if you don't mind?
Okay, pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the public which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our meeting's called to order. Who else we missing? Do we have Mr. Paul on tonight? No, I see.
Yeah.
I want to make sure I have a quorum here.
Now you don't want it? Because you want me to shut it down?
We're good.
Yeah, you do have quorum.
All right, we're doing good. Well, as I always say, starting off the meeting, we like to give each other the due respect to be heard, to being heard, and let them finish whatever they're speaking about before we interject our comments and, you know, just give them that, that brief time to speak and a little space in between so we're not stepping on each other when we're trying to have a conversation. So we keep our conversations respectful and as we have done for quite a few years now, which I really appreciate. And I guess after that, that's pretty much what we got at this point. So, um, we would like to officially open the meeting via Zoom. We have the meeting minutes of December 2nd, 2021, that we've all had a copy of to review. I know Mr. Meltzer has made a couple of changes with Sarah, I believe, and I don't know if it was recirculated back out with the corrections or not, but as always, thank you very much, Bill, for taking a look at them and going over what is right and what's wrong or could need to be changed.
I think Sarah advised me she was able to make the changes.
So do I have a motion to accept the minutes then as revised? Franco?
Sal will second that.
Sal's got a second. Thank you. Thank you, Larry, too. So under all business, we have the Cuisine Machine Incorporated, site plan review, 9W section, block and lot number 88.1-3 and 8-18. In the DB zone, the applicant is seeking a site plan approval of a site plan to permit a restaurant use of mobile food trucks with takeout service only. Secret status is unlisted and the updated plans and memo were received and circulated to the board and the actions to be determined. So what else was, what else was there? Anything on that tonight?
Yeah, we sent Patty away with some homework. You guys had some questions about the pole, electrical services to the different locations and some landscaping. We got an email from Patty today. She says she was not ready for tonight, so she's going to go off and do her research and we'll see her next month.
Well, that's even quicker and shorter. Like, you know, I was going to say something. After going by that property, I was wondering, are they putting some sort of rail or something so that nobody goes off that edge?
That's, yeah, I think there is something in the back. I can pull up the map if you want, but I don't think there's a lot in the back.
It looked like a substantial drop off back there, if I'm not mistaken, isn't it?
Yeah, I checked it this morning. I was going to encourage you all to take another look at it. It's a pretty small site for five relatively, you know, large-ish food trucks. So, you know, maybe you guys want to go look at it. Five is a lot, I think, plus, you know, other traffic, you know, the folks.
Yeah, I saw it too. It just did look like a lot of space for, like you said, five. And then when I noticed the drop off, I was like, wow, I don't know how they're putting all those in there. And a vehicle coming off of the highway turning into that, it's just kind of.
Yeah, there's no map. There's no, there's no fence. There is landscaping and stone. I can bring that up if you'd like.
I mean, what do you guys think? I'm only bringing it up because I, I drove by it and saw it and it really didn't look too, it didn't look too safe.
So, you know, we.
Lot of the property?
One more time, Franco.
Is he going to fill the property in? Bring fill in?
I didn't know. I don't remember that. I don't remember any of that.
No, no, the property is what it is now. Let me bring it up just so you can have it in your eyes.
And Andy, you were saying something?
Yeah, so the, the, what, what Dave described as rock, you know, and landscaping, the intention there is actually boulders, so something pretty substantial, you know, that would, you know, kind of take the place of, of guardrails. I believe that was their intention.
Okay, I mean, I guess that'll work as long as they're large enough, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, let's. Is there a mandatory, is there any sort of a restriction on the size of these food trucks?
Yeah, they're actually licensed by, by the Health Department. I think there is. I don't know what the numbers are, but there is a maximum length until you get up into a very different permit level. The Health Department can permit up to a full-size tractor-trailer, but that's a whole different animal than what he's proposing here. He's proposing fully, probably sixteen foot, maybe eighteen foot truck, not, not the big trailers, obviously. So, but it's a tight lot. I drove by it this morning again and might be good for you guys to take a peek at it.
I recommend that to the rest of the board. Like I said, when I went by and looked at it, I was, wow.
Okay, yeah, I'll take, I'll take a look, yeah.
I drive by it every day.
So what do you think, Franco?
Did we get comments back from DOT?
Okay.
Not yet.
I'm wondering whether there's a question, the, coming up around that turn there. There is a slight turn in the road and the grade rises. So if somebody's actually in their hours of operation, but if somebody's flying up that road and there's a backup waiting to get into the property, we're going to have a problem.
Yeah, we actually asked Patty, I think at the first meeting, by queuing on the 9W. Franco, you are right. That is a sharp turn. I'm going to bring the map up again because the location map actually shows it pretty well. Let me scroll over there. Can you all see that? This is the turn in question. And that's, you know, as you know, it's posted fifty-five, travel's actually posted at seventy. So, any, any queuing out there is going to be a problem. And one of the reasons why, you know, the question about the number of trucks is if you have a bunch of trucks, you might get more queuing because there may be more locations for people to go to. I'm just putting it out there. I don't have, I mean, I have an opinion about it, but you guys, you know, it's a side. It's a queuing along 9W would be terrible if that happened.
Well, anything else from, anything else? Andy, you got anything else on it? Nothing? Anyone from the board? Anyone else? Well, we'll see what other information she offers us when she comes back in. And now I see Paul's on, so. Paul, do you have anything? Maybe he's not totally on.
I'm all set. I'm sorry. I've been here.
Oh, no, I apologize. Thank you, Paul.
Nope, not a problem.
Well, so now under new business, we have the Nathan Lewis Special Use Permit, 24 Vineyard Avenue, section, block and lot number ninety-five point two dash two dash twenty-one. The applicant is seeking a special use permit for renovating the second floor garage into living space. And the space is twenty-two point five by twenty-two point five feet for a total of five hundred and six square feet. There's a deck and stairs for outside entrance to the space, type two seeker, I mean, status is a type two. And the application and plans were circulated to the board on his new revised plans. So anyone, is the applicant here? Okay, how about somebody from the, from staff? You got any comments on this?
Yeah, the only real question I had is, in the past, the board has typically required a design professional to do the markup of the maps. This is, you know, the original map, but with the language up above it about what's going to be removed. Nothing else has changed in terms of, it's a middle, so it's going to be up to whether you guys accept it or not.
I mean, it's almost, you know, rested aboard. What do you guys say? Think about it. Sal, you're usually pretty good at this sort of thing. What do you think?
Does, does this, I think it has a ceiling. Is that correct? It has a ceiling that is supporting, it's supporting? But it's not supporting the roof. That's what I'm guessing. I'm looking at, does anybody know, Dave?
Yeah, it's not load-bearing. No, it's actually a capable roof. There were ties a little higher to support that. So, yeah, it's not load-bearing.
So, yeah. I, I would tend to think, I would tend to think that the homeowner could handle it, but, I mean, he could contact.
He's actually a contractor, you know, by trade, so I'm sure Dave, most people can handle it.
I mean, we're just talking about what size header that would be, right? It's basically all we're saying.
In effect, the question really is, where you accept a non-design professional's, you know, bubble, so to speak. You know, it's up to you guys.
Technically, technically, it's not really kosher, but.
It's, I don't want to set a precedent so somebody else can come in and do the same thing either. So I think by all standards, that'd be my opinion. For the rest of the board, I'll, I'll go with what the rest of everybody else would say to this because, but, but again, you're right. It's technically not kosher. It's not what we would expect. That's why we have engineers to come in and design these things and know what our codes are and they, they draw them up so that hopefully it meets the code as, as much as possible, so.
I know I missed the workshop meeting and I, I saw that the pictures that Dave circulated show there's an existing bathroom in there and almost a whole kitchen already. So is that just the lay-in is applying back in May till now and you went ahead and did the work?
No, this is him attempting to legalize the existing and long now existing apartment. The house may be for sale, I'm one hundred percent on that, but it popped up on our radar possibly through a refi or municipal search of some way. So we, you know, we did our enforcement piece and here we are.
So you, you went to him and said legalize?
We went to him and gave him an option. We could take him to court or you could come, you guys to legalize it.
Okay, great.
I mean, I look at it, this is Jerry. I mean, cleans up the drawing. I don't see a problem with it. Makes the drawing right.
So my only comment on that is, are these stamped drawings? Are they stamped by an architect?
I believe they are, or engineer.
So technically, it's against New York State education law for anyone to modify a drawing if they're not a licensed professional.
There's our answer. And again, we don't want to set up, that's my opinion. I don't want to set a precedent, so somebody else comes in with a napkin and says, look, this is what we're looking to build. You know what I mean? So, and it's a change drawing. So, guys, we'll take a quick poll. What do you think? I, I don't see everybody on here, but I can ask David if you could drop the table.
I'm going to drop, yeah, I apologize. Here we go.
No, you're fine. You're fine. So I'll run through and I'll ask Larry, what is your drawing or, I mean, an engineer drawing or not? Revision, I should say, engineered revision. You're unmute, partner. There you go. Say it again.
Just make sure you can't turn it into a two-bedroom apartment later.
So do you think you should have an engineer or drawn by an engineer? The revision? Your button's going the other way for you. I, we didn't hear you. Bill, what do you say?
It looks like that is dated from last week or this week, those plans by an architect. So I'm not sure what our issue is. If it's just a handwritten note, did that come from the developer, the owner, or is that, is that the issue?
No, typically, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Dave. No, you go.
Typically, if an architect does it, and Sal, you can please do correct me if I'm speaking out of turn here. The architect reproduced the map with a bubble call-out, and that's typically how we would do it for a field change. And Sal, my.
Yeah, that's, I think he even has, I think he even has on his title block, you know, place for reissuing it. So that would be, you know, a revision. I, I agree, just resubmit. It's, it's nitpicky, but we should.
That's two, and I'm three. Franco, what do you say? Bill?
Revise and resubmit.
Revise and resubmit. Bill?
And I'm in agreement with that.
And I'm going to, Larry, or Jerry?
Yeah, I agree. If we resubmit him, I'm good with, I'm good with it.
I'm just going to run through. Larry, was it a yes or a no?
Yes.
And Lambros? Lambros, I think, is frozen. Yes. So it would be a resubmit then, David. We could just have him do it the right way. Again, we, we were bored. The last thing we want to do is set a precedence, so somebody else comes in and everybody starts scratching.
I agree with you all a hundred percent. And I told Larry, Larry and I had a phone conversation, and I think this is one of the best possible enactments, if we get it to one bedroom, of what the code is driving for, an accessory building, secondary to the principal use. So if we get this locked up, this will be the textbook that we say, look, applicant, this is what we're, this is what we want and need. And so that's what, yeah, we'll have him resubmit. Good, perfect.
So the extended public hearings next on the agenda, there's Stewart Site Plan Review thirty-seven point thirty-three, or sorry, thirty-seven thirty-three, Route 9W, section, block and lot number ninety-six point nine dash one dash thirty-three point one hundred. In Highway Business District, the applicant is proposing a new typical Stewart shop, convenience store, thirty-eight hundred and fifty square feet with self-service gasoline, type-two seeker. The public hearing was open and extended. Updated plans were circulated to the board, and this is based on conditional approval. So we had a couple of issues, wasn't it? I think somebody had sent out an email questioning whether or not there was the entrance. I think it was Bill. Do you want to speak to your point?
No, Andy confirmed that that was, that that was incorrect, that it's just going to be an egress and they can't exit there.
Gotcha.
That's fine.
And the buffer issue, wasn't there a buffer issue? Somebody else was concerned with Sal?
Yeah, thanks, Scott. Well, I know, as you guys know, we're supposed to have a buffer or a fence, right? So, or something like that, or the board can use its judgment or so forth. But I just wanted to look at the landscaping there and just wondered if we could do anything to help that. It's, you know, it's not a small, tight neighborhood, but it's, would be worth it to try to, you know, do something there with maybe some evergreen shrubs or something.
That's a point that I think Carl's made a few times about the, the shrubbery and the landscaping over there as a buffer. And, and what is it in the Highway Business District? Don't they have to have it if there's bordering residential or something? It was, right? Isn't that how it's worded?
That's exactly right. Yep. Sal, you mean that the south, the south end of the property?
Yeah, right. Well, I, I mean, the, you know, a bordering Chapel Hill Road, actually, because the, the residential is, 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 I don't know if wagon wheels is really residential, is it? It's, but across the street is certainly residential. So, you know, I just wondered if we could ask them to, well, for, I mean, a couple of things. First of all, I think that the, the fence is there because the dumpster is there. I'm not sure. And it, there's not enough room to plant it. But anyway, I just thought we maybe, you know, talk about adding some pine trees, something there just to sort of help out the neighborhood a little bit. So in the beginning of the triangle and then possibly on the inside of the fence, something like that. Yeah, just do something in there. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I know there's an infiltration chamber there.
They have infiltration and piping all through there.
Yeah, so maybe that's why it's a fence. I, I don't remember why it was. Maybe because there's an infiltration chamber there. And I also, I don't know if it's a site distance problem too either, but, um, anyway, that was one thing. I thought we should ask for some kind of planting along there, just as a gesture to, to try to beef that up. And it might just, you know, I don't think the code, code gives an exact size. But it does, it does say we could, we should have a buffer and that we could do a fence, so. I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but, you know, if they, if they switch the dumpster to the other side of the parking lot, that might help too as far as having a buffer. Basically, just trying to do my job, but that's basically what, that was what I, that's what I mentioned to you, Scott.
I was thinking, when you say switch the dumpster over the other side, you mean on the other side of the building itself?
Yeah, oh, yeah, to give it more green there, you know, whatever.
Well, that's a fence. Are you going to be able to see in there with that fence?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Sal, look at it. Take a look. Because I, I don't know if you're going to be able to see anything in there. What's that, a six-foot-high fence? Andy, do you remember that?
Yeah, it's a six-foot-high fence. I believe there's a detail for it. It's, I think it's vinyl, if I'm not mistaken. And Andy, do you know, is that triangular section, does that also have infiltration chambers? You can kind of see it in the picture. That's, that's all, that whole corner is all underground infiltration there. And, and there's water line behind it coming through. There's a, there's a lot of stuff going on in that corner. I'm not sure if you could get too many plantings in there. You know, and outside the fence that we've got, you know, an easement to the town where we don't really want a lot of vegetation there because, you know, there's a potential for future extension of utilities through that area, so. Okay. You might be able to squeeze, you know, there's a utility, utility there, pole there right next to the, kind of just up into the left of the dumpster, so you can't really, you're probably going to have trouble getting a tree in there too. So, yeah. All right. Well, that's why we went with the fence, I guess. Yeah.
Anyone else, any other comments?
Yeah, this is Jerry. The only thing I could think is because it might be an issue. What is the fence white? Maybe we could look maybe a different, like earth tone colors or something, so it's not so much in your face, the fence itself. Maybe that might help. Maybe.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, could I answer a question here?
Absolutely.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate all your questions and comments and Sal and everyone. So a couple of things. So the fence, we went, we elected with that. As Andy mentioned, we have a bunch of infrastructurey of easements to the town. So we're very limited on what we can do back there already. We looked at having additional plantings originally with the water easement behind the shop. That's going to be given to the town if approved. That limits our ability, you know, to have additional plantings. In terms of fencing, the fencing we went was with a cream color, almond color, and that was per feedback from the board.
Tyler, that matches your billing color, doesn't it?
It's slightly different, but it is close.
Why, you guys, you guys are going with lighter, lighter cream white colors on the new buildings?
Yeah, it's like a grayish, like whitish, grayish.
All right.
Okay, well, it sounds like, it sounds like we really can't do all that much there, so I got it.
So, speaking to staff, did we get all the other information that we were looking to get as far as, I believe there was the sewer paperwork or something we were doing with the other neighbor next door? The water.
Yep, so CPL, the town board authorized CPL to do the map plan report. They've done that work. The town board has, has set public hearings on the extension of the water and sewer district of this property and wagon wheel, in addition to two other properties, villages and use. And that's for next month. And actually, all put together, because there was some question at the last meeting as to what, you know, what the pieces would be that you guys would need and feel comfortable with in terms of, in terms of conditional approval. I can bring those up right now. Everyone on my screen, if you want, guys want to take a look at them. I know you've been emailing them, but I have them right here. We could talk about them. Yes?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, let's look at it. Sure.
Can you all see that?
Yeah.
So Scott, you want to walk, walk us through it or you want to do that?
I can, but I've got a bit of a screen issue here, so let me move your screen a little bit if I can. I hope I can do that. That's awesome. You guys are on a different screen now, so don't mind me. So I'll just read off through here. Say that one more time.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can walk us through if you guys just want to.
Dave, go ahead if you don't mind, because I.
Keep your little graces for thinking. The first one is also kind of DPW and DOT for the, you know, the trucks that'll go in and out of the site. You know, there's one in from Chapel Hill Road and then one in and one out on 9W. The one that's on South Chapel Hill extension is town, and Richie's already given his, his thumbs up on that. So that would be one of the conditions before final approval. And we know, especially we know now that DOT is way back up, way back up, more than I've ever seen them. So the next piece, number two, is the Osce County Health Department for Water and Sewer Connections. I don't know, Andy, I think that's the case that we can't even sort of engage them officially until we get the district extended. We actually anticipate that may happen next month. So that's condition two. They're going to verge, you know, the three lots into one. That's condition three. That's probably the easiest of them all. Number four is the extension of the sewer water sewer district of the site and, and wagon wheel. Number five, Andy and company, and Paul and Sean Murphy are going to make sure that all the bits and pieces related to the water sewer easements are good to go. Number six is that Andy's going to make sure that all the technical pieces, as always, delivered on every site plan are copacetic, and we get a letter from, from Andy and CPL saying that. And then I make sure that they pay all their fees and make sure their escrow is up to date. Those will be the conditions related to your conditional approval. After that, if we did that, it would sort of fall to Andy, myself and Paul to make sure that they got all those, you know, check all those boxes, and then we get it. And then I make sure that all the other agencies that might be involved have signed off as well. So those are the conditions.
Does anyone have anything more to add or any comments on it? Go ahead, Paul.
Just want to highlight the other condition. Dave and I were talking and we, we were pretty clear in our minds that the board was wanting to limit fuel deliveries to certain times a day. So what we chose was basically prohibiting fuel deliveries during the rush hour at the beginning and end of each day. And that's just on the next page, top of the next page. Be it further resolved that no fuel deliveries to the project shall occur between seven o'clock AM and nine thirty AM or between four PM and six PM to reduce traffic impacts from the project.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. So are we, are we leaving this? We can actually go through with the, the site plan approval for this tonight, right? We can actually.
Yeah, it's, it's conditional. You know, they have to still got all, all those boxes, but all those boxes sort of other agency-related. You know, DOT, Health Department, DPW. So if you guys are comfortable with the conditions, you know, that are on the resolution, you could do a conditional approval and then Tyler and his team would have to go and collect all the, all the other pieces that they need to satisfy, you know, those conditions.
And it'll close the public hearing at that point too, right?
That's correct, yeah. You close public hearing.
Is there anything just a little bit out of turn about doing it before the town board has their hearing? I mean.
Um, yeah, so that's a good question because we've done Health Department conditional approvals before the Health Department sign off. We've also done it for County DPW in the past on North Riverside Road. So I, I get your concern. I don't, right now, my, it's my understanding that the board voted unanimously to set the public hearing. So my sense is the board is, you know, interested and inclined to approve it. The engineering that Andy and his team worked out seems to work out okay, and it, you know, gives us, and I know that wagon wheel wants it. You know, it's going to help him in the biggest ways, so.
Doesn't sound like there's any issues with it anyway.
Yeah.
Design wise, right?
Andy, there was nothing that popped up, right?
Say again, Dave, I'm sorry.
There was nothing that popped up in the engineering review.
No, no, I mean, it's, it's going to be pretty straightforward. No, no, I mean, it's it's gonna be pretty straightforward. There's there's a few technical questions about the pipe going underneath or nine W, but that's that can be that can be easily resolved.
It's, uh, Sal, I think that, um, what what we try to do with the conditions at this point. And and that's why we wanted to kind of go over them and make sure you're comfortable with them is really to, uh, these are conditions that have to be fulfilled before Scott can sign off on the plans before the actual final approval can occur. So, you know, if there's any amendments that anyone DOT, County Department of Transportation, uh, the town board, um, you know, through its approval of the sewer district. Um, you know, if they require any amendments, um, then that would require an amended site plan approval. And if it's a material amendment, that would definitely come back to you all before, um, any kind of full approval can be given to this project. So that's, is, you know, i- it's kind of your level of comfort with those conditions. You'd like to see more progress, you could certainly hold the hearing open. Um, or you could, uh, close the hearing and, uh, anticipate potentially a decision by the town board within the next month. Um, I would mention also just to remind the board that this is a seeker type two project because it's less than four thousand square feet. Uh, it's a it's a building that it's a non-residential building, less than four thousand square feet in size. And so that qualifies as a type two. And and then the other thing, um, I'm sure you've all had an opportunity to look at uh, the site plan review findings that we prepared. We wanted to make sure that we kind of walked through the different criteria for site plan, uh, review approval. Um, and and touched on some of those things, uh, some of which you talked about tonight in terms of the landscaping, for example. Uh, because there there are requirements and Sal pointed out in the code relative to, uh, landscaping uh, for commercial uses and, uh, for marketing areas, frankly.
So other, what are the benefits of having the resolution done tonight? How does this, how does this really help anything? If they still got all this work to go, what is the purpose of doing this now if we do it? I just want to know the benefit part of it. It's almost seems like it's it's a redundant thing. I mean, it's just extending it out further. For whatever reason.
Yeah, it's it's really just checking a box on their end and, um, you know, uh, realizing that they they've gotten to where they need to be with the planning board. You guys are the primary agency and the other agencies. Uh, approvals follow typically. Um, so, you know, from their standpoint, um, you know, it's checking that box and saying, okay, we got our project moving. Now we gotta go and do the other homework to get these other approvals. Um, so, um. And, you know, but but certainly there's no reason, uh, why you hold it open or, um, um, close it and wait till next month. You have sixty days.
Yeah, just just so you all know, to that point, if they don't actually tick all the boxes, they don't get the approval. So you got, I mean, the condition just evaporates, you know, after a certain period, so. Um, so what's the benefit? Uh, it probably helps them in terms of securing additional financing. Um, what's the harm to us and you guys? I can't think of any, um, there's really none. Mr. Hammond, what?
Larry, go ahead, sir.
Yes, do we have to have a time gap after we close the public hearing for the public to make comments?
No, the that that would, uh, end the public comment process, but the board would have, um, sixty days to make its decision.
Well, I see where it's not gonna hurt to close it then and and finish it up at this point on our end. Um, how does the rest of the board feel?
Close it.
Close it.
Sal, Larry, anybody else to you opposed to closing it?
I'm not, I'm not opposed, uh, Scott.
Okay.
Close it.
All right, seems unanimous to me. So here we are. Paul, would you handle this part for me, sir?
Yeah, will you do a motion to close?
I was gonna get there, but I was gonna ask you So can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Jerry, motion.
Second?
Second, okay.
Take your pick on that one, Dave. Okay, and, um, do a roll call on this one? I always forget. Do I have to?
I think you're okay, just, uh, letting, asking if there's anybody opposed.
Okay, is anyone opposed? Seeing none? Public hearings closed. Paul, would you mind bringing us to the, uh, the resolution?
Okay, um, so this is a site plan review approval, uh, that for Stewart Shops Corp. Um, whereas Stewart Shop proposes to redevelop lands as a thirty-seven hundred and twenty square foot convenience store with self-service gasoline, uh, involving the three tax parcels comprising one point one nine plus minus acres located at three seven three three New York State Route nine W. Uh, whereas the site is located in the Highway Business Zoning District, uh, designated uh, by the zoning code where it's an allowable use subject to site plan review uh, by the planning board, whether the planning boards empowered by town law and the zoning codes reviews review the proposed site plan for the project. And where we're, whereas the planning board has considered the, uh, January first twenty one, twenty twenty one application and all the supporting documentation uh, submitted by the applicant, whereas the playing board referred the project to the Ulster County Planning Board. Um, and and the planning board replied on September first twenty twenty one with a required modification that the illumination from the fueling canopies should be limited to an average of no more than twenty foot in response to modify the site plans, uh, to reduce the number of LED lights in the canopy so that the average illumination, uh, is, uh, less than twenty foot candles. And whereas the planning board has determined that the project is a type two action under seeker. And since the convenience store will involve the construction of a primary non-residential structure or facility involving less than four thousand square feet of gross floor area and not involving a change in zoning or a use variance and is consistent with local land use controls. And whereas on August twelfth, twenty twenty one, the top Town of Lloyd zoning board of appeals granted two area variances for the project. Lot coverage and sign height and the project otherwise complies with the dimensional and other requirements of the zoning code. Uh, whereas pursuant to town law and the zoning code over the course of several months, the planning board conducted a public hearing on the proposed project. Um, the hearing was conducted remotely, uh, et cetera. Uh, planning board has reviewed the project for compliance with the criteria for issuance of a site plan approval set forth in zoning code section one hundred fifty-three B and makes and adopts adopts the findings set forth in the attached site plan review findings concluding that the project complies with those standards. Now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to the zoning code in New York State Town Law two seventy-four dash eight A eight. The planning board hereby approves the following site plan reports for the project, uh, which would be known as the approved site plans. Um, and these are basically, uh, the eighteen, uh, sheet site plan set, uh, entitled uh, proposed Stewart Shop, uh, prepared by Stewart Shops and dated September fourth, two thousand and nineteen. Last revised December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, and this then also we have a stormwater pollution prevention plan dated May fifth, twenty twenty-one. Be it further resolved that the chairman of the planning board is authorized to sign the approved site plans as may be amended below upon receipt of uh, documentation, the conceptual approvals from the highway departments, both state and county. Documentation of Ulster County Department of Health approvals, uh, proof of recordation with the Ulster County Clerk of a merger deed for the three tax parcels. Documentation of approval of, uh, town board approval of an extension of the municipal water and sewer district to serve the site. Uh, confirmation by the planning board's engineer and attorney of the acceptability of the form and substance of proposed water and sewer easements, uh, to, uh, Town of Lloyd from the applicant and from the adjoining property owner to the south of the site. And confirmation by the planning board's engineer that the applicant has satisfactorily addressed all other remaining comments on the approved site plans and payment by the applicant of all outstanding escrow and other fees. And be it further resolved that upon execution of the approved site plans by the planning board chair, the town's CEO is authorized to issue any zoning permits, building permits or any other permits approvals to allow construction on the project to proceed after this confirmation that all discretionary approvals by other agencies as required have been issued through the project. All approved easements have been recorded with yesterday Ulster County Clerk's office and all outstanding escrow and other fees owed to the town have been paid. Be it further resolved that no fuel deliveries to the project shall occur between seven o'clock AM and nine thirty AM or between four PM and six PM to reduce traffic impact from the project. Be it further resolved that any of the reviewing agencies for the project require any material or significant changes to the approved site plans as determined by the chairman in his sole discretion. The applicant shall submit amended site plans to the planning board for approval prior to execution of the amended uh, approved site plans by the chairman. Amended site plan approvals should not be required for any immaterial or minor changes to the approved site plans. Um, be it further resolved that if any part of this resolution is annulled by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remainder of this resolution shall remain full force in effect. And be it further resolved that within five days of the effective date of this resolution, a copy shall be filed in the office of the Town Lloyd Town Clerk. A copy of this resolution shall be mailed to the applicant within the same five day period. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if you want to entertain a motion, now would be the time.
Somebody would like to make a motion accepting the, uh, resolution as read?
Jerry, motion.
Second, please.
Uh, Sal will second.
Sal, second. Thank you very much. And anyone opposed? We're good.
Scott, uh, Scott, just for this one, would you, um, would you mind doing a roll call?
Roll call.
No problem, yes. So, um, I'm gonna do a full board roll call. That's all right, right? So Bill? I'm a yes. Mr. Hammond?
Approved.
Mr. Zanny?
Hi.
Mr. Cachetti?
Hi.
Mr. Marion?
Yes.
And Lambros?
Yes.
There you go.
And Mr. Hammond.
Mr. Hammond?
Oh, yes, I apologize.
All right, so it's, um, unanimous. And the resolution is accepted as read. Thank you.
Congratulations, Tyler.
Thank you very much, everyone.
All right, thanks, Tyler.
We've had a long road now. He's got a long road.
Thank you. Take care now.
Take care. Okay, next on the agenda is a the new public hearing for the Mountainside Woods Lot Line Revision twenty and twenty-two Emerson Terrace. Is it Terrance Emerson Terrance Section Block and Lot eighty-seven point two one dash three dash twenty-four and eighty-seven point two one dash three dash twenty-three. The applicant is seeking a lot line revision for the purposes of meeting setbacks. This is was a extremely straightforward project. We've seen many of these come before us. So, um, someone open the, um, or make a motion, open a public hearing? Thank you, Larry. Is anyone from the, um, project here to speak? Anyone from the public here to speak?
Move to close.
Thank you, Larry. A second?
Back it.
Very nice. Um, and here we go. We have a resolution granting the subdivision approval for the purpose of lot line rep lot line revision on lands owned by Mountainside Woods LLC on January twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two. Project name Mountainside Woods LLC Lot Line Revision Mountainside Property Owners Mountainside Woods. Property location is twenty and twenty-two Emerson Terrace. Section block and lot number have been read. Seeker classification type two. Application description was a subdivision review. Whereas the Town of Lloyd Planning Board has received an application from Mountainside Woods LLC for the purpose proposed lot line revision of lanes located at twenty and twenty-two Emerson Terrace in the Town of Lloyd, Ulster County, New York. And whereas the project would revise the lot line between section block and lot number eighty-seven point two one dash three dash two three and eighty-seven point two dash three two four. And whereas the planning board is reviewing the project pursuant to chapter ninety of the Code of the Town of Lloyd Subdivision Regulations and New York State Town Law subsection two seven six. And whereas the application has submitted a complete application as required by subsection ninety-five G and H in the subset, I'm sorry, subdivision regulations in support of its request for a subdivision approval of the project, including the application seeker short environmental assessment form part one. Lot line change plan prepared by the engineer in surveying properties last revised September twentieth, twenty twenty-one. And pursuant, whereas pursuant to six New York N Y C R R subsection six fifteen dot point five C sixteen and the project is a type two action under seeker. So no further seeker review is required. And whereas the planning board has reviewed and considered all the information in the application submitted in support of the project. And whereas the planning board held a public hearing on the application for the board project as required by subdivision regulations and New York State Town Law, the planning board considered all public comments at the hearing and closed the public hearing on January twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two. And whereas pursuant to the subdivision regulations, the planning board has reviewed the project as both a proposed preliminary and final plat and finds that the additional public hearing on a final subdivision plat is unnecessary. Now therefore, if be resolved that pursuant to subsection ninety dash four D five of the subdivision regulations and consistent with New York State Town Law subsection seventy-six two seventy-six six B and the planning board hereby waives the requirement for a public hearing on the final subdivision plat submitted for the approval by the applicant. And be it further resolved that pursuant to subdivision regulations subsection ninety dash four D six and New York State Town Law subsection two seven six and the planning board hereby approves conditionally the final subdivision plat for the project entitled Lot Line Change Plan prepared by the engineering and surveying properties last visited, I'm sorry, last revised September twentieth, twenty twenty-one. And be it further resolved that pursuant to the subdivisions regulations and New York State Town Law, the planning board chairman is hereby authorized to sign the approved plat upon satisfaction of the following conditions. Signature of the approved plat by the surveyor and the property owner in the blocks provided on the approved plat and payment of any fees owed to the Town of Lloyd. And upon completion of the requirements of the conditional approval, the chairman shall sign the approved plat thereby certifying it as a final. And be it further resolved that pursuant to subdivision regulations subsection ninety dash four D nine, the applicant shall record the approved final plat with the Ulster County Office within ninety days after it's signed by the planning board chairman and or it shall be null and void and be it further resolved that six copies of the approved plat final plat showing the endorsement of the Ulster County Clerk shall be obtained, transmitted to the town clerk within thirty days of the date of filing for distribution of the planning board, three copies. Tax assessor, town authorized inspector and code enforcement officer. And be it further resolved that if any part of this resolution is annulled by a court of competent jurisdiction, the remainder of this resolution shall remain in full force and effect. And be it further resolved that within five days of the effective date of the resolution, a copy shall be filed in the office for, of the town of Lloyd Clerk, town clerk, and a copy of this resolution shall be mailed to the applicant within the same five day period. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect immediately. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution as read?
So motion.
I got a, I got a Larry. Can I have a second?
Second.
Franco, a second. And congratulations.
Could we get a short, could we get a short discussion, Scott? Sorry, I just have to ask a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, this is just on me, okay? I didn't get a chance to look at the map. I looked through my emails. I couldn't find it. So you could either put it up, Dave could either put it up on the screen for me and I could take a quick look at it or I could abstain. So whichever you prefer. All right, that, oh, that's it. Okay. Oh, that's lot seventy and seventy-one. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that what they're showing? Okay, that's where I was confused because I have that map. Okay. I have that map. It didn't say seventy and seventy-one on the resolution.
Constant theme with them, Sal. It's a pain in my ass. Yeah, because they'll use either lot numbers or they use addresses. And it turns, it's always a thing, so.
Okay, so I, I have seen it.
But they did use the proper section block and lot number, right? So that's still the identification.
Everything else is copacetic. It's confused.
Yeah.
It's been like that since they started building.
Okay, anyone opposed? Seeing none, this motion, this resolution has been accepted. Thank you. So I do have one other thing, seeing as though we're done with, oh, we're done with the public hearing and the, the resolution. We did get in the, some of our emails, I want to say we got probably, I think it was last week, we did get some paperwork on the new adaptive reuse law that's being proposed. So hoping that everybody has read it and if there's anything that we would like to add to it, have discussion over, I strongly urge that because it's, it's going about a different way than what we were doing, although it's totally copacetic the way they did it. It's just, you know, some of our input would be recommended for anything that might need to be added or deleted or changed. All right. So if anybody has, Dave, you want to speak to it a little bit?
Yeah, if you don't mind. Yeah, and I do know that the town board has a clock that they are interested in pursuing. The clock, actually, the public hearing is set for the sixteenth of February. And it's been referred up to the county. It has officially been referred to you. We, you guys do not meet until the day after the sixteenth. And I know the town board is inclined to.
Ask for some of our input.
I guess ASAP. So it may, it may require, you know, a quick, if you want, earlier meeting to get a vote or comments from you all. I'm not sure how you guys want to do that. But I do know the town board, the supervisor and the town board, I think all the town boards are inclined to kind of get this thing, you know, moving along. So I'm just putting it out there. I'm not trying to pressure you guys. I'm just letting you be aware that there is some.
Has everyone read the new, the proposed adaptive reuse law that they want to change?
I read it. I have not yet.
I read it and some limited comments already. I think I want to take a closer look at what the definition of underutilized should be here. Because I do think it's just open to too much interpretation on a case-by-case basis that we're not going to want to do. But the town will want to do.
I had a question, Dave. So in the central business district now, you can't have apartments on the first floor. Is that right? It has to be a commercial. So would this change that in theory or could it?
It would. That's, that's a good question, Sal, because the, when the that's a damn good question. Probably not in the CB district. I think they would still have to go for a variance for ground floor. There's actually somebody right now who owns a building on Milton Avenue, right there in Chinese Place, who I think is going to put together an application for that old unused section of that building there. I, you know, I just spoke to him yesterday, so.
That's where like the antique shop was or something like that?
Yeah, yeah. So he's down the hill from that. He's literally right next to Jacob's Music. Used to be a warehouse in there.
Yeah, I know the building. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he sticks it up, but it's still, I mean, it's still dead pitches inside, so. But he can't have apartment first floor. He wants to put eight units in that one little section of the building. I think he can fit it. But the code is clear in the Hamlet Overlay District, which is, you know, the CB zone. No, no residential on the first floor.
So this doesn't, this doesn't open the door for that if a building does it or doesn't? I mean, the town board theoretically do that, right?
I mean, Paul can help with that, but I think, my sense of, because it is, if you're in the CB zone, the overlay already applies to you. And the overlay says no residential first floor. If there's another overlay, which happens to be the adaptive reuse overlay, I think it has to sort of sit on top of the existing, I mean, Paul, you can help if I'm speaking out of school on this. But I think that the, you know, here's the downtown, the Hamlet piece. Adaptive reuse goes on top of that, which means to get your residential first floor out of your adaptive reuse, I think you need a variance. Because I don't know that there's a trigger and I'll have to reread the law. I participated in its creation or recreation, I guess. But I don't know there's a trigger in there. The town board gets a piece of the discussion in terms of density, but not location. And I don't know that this board is given the authority in the adaptive reuse law to waive or amend the residential first floor prohibition in an existing already on the ground overlay zone.
Interesting.
But I'll dig into that a little bit. That's my knee jerk. I mean, that's what I would say right now if you asked me to write it out. But I'd have to do.
The unintended consequences, you know, if, if the market goes one way, like right now residential's super hot. And you could lose commercial because you're, you know, it's allowed and.
Yeah, so, yeah, so that's a really good point. It's a good point. There's a good point because I think, you know, and I have spoken to the supervisor on this. Dave and I have spoken several times and he is absolutely inclined to make sure that there's a commercial component to any adaptive reuse. You know, if we think about what babes used to be out here on the corner, you know, that's a that's a great, I think, application. They had commercial downstairs, residential upstairs. It's beautiful.
That's a good project. But I hate to lose, I'd hate to lose the underground cafe because there's somebody put apartments in there or something like that, you know. Anyway.
Well, so that goes back to Bill's earlier question, you know, what does underutilized mean? Because, because in my opinion, adaptive reuse wouldn't apply to the underground, you know, it would apply more to a cooler or a warehouse or something, you know, that is half a dozen coolers within a quarter mile of where I'm sitting now, where you're sitting now. So, yeah, anyway, I'm sorry, Paul, you were going to say something.
No, no, no. I think it's a really good question. I think it's something that we need to look back at what's been drafted and, and make sure there aren't that sort of unintended consequences. I also think that the question about underutilized is a good one. So those, those are good thoughts and I think it's the sooner the planning board can get its head around it and get comments to the town board, you know, the town board can consider those and incorporate any potential changes in it, you know, as it moves forward.
So. A lot of, I'm going to just, two things. First, I, I realize the definition of adapted reuse. I mean, I've gone over it a few times and they really don't really, from many different sources, it doesn't change that much. And it is the reutilization of a building or a structure. Is there any way we can put a percentage to that? To that, as far as what the old structure was? And some of it, again, depends on where you read it, it had something that had, may have a historic value, an architectural value to the property. Copying the same building footprint. Those are the main issues. So my, my understanding or the way I think we fell into problems before was what the actual, the meaning of the word adaptive reuse was and what it was implying. So even in this case, we have the supervisor or town board who is coming up with another, you know, and it's a great thing because actually, had we had time this year, we probably, or before I should say, we probably would have done this then to try and get it built. Dave, you know, that was something I believe the previous supervisor wanted to get to and we never really got to it yet. So with COVID and everything else. So, but I'll say this. The intention is of what the law is derived from always comes to our plate. We always, well, what was the intention of that law when it was written? Okay, maybe that should be also described in the zoning because when we go on later on, I mean, it's a guy like me, the first thing I'm going to say is, okay, A, what historical value does it have and what architectural value does it have that we are going to try and keep within, to make that, that, that this law apply to it? You know what I'm saying? We don't have a historical society in the town of Lloyd that can actually deem a building or any one of those seventeen structures of any historical value or even architectural value. Just as in our training, it was their white elephants. Most of them are. You have your grape juice factory. You have the, the printing company, that building there on Vineyard Avenue. You have a couple of things that are just white elephants. What can we do to reutilize them and revitalize them? So my only concern is that. I believe that the definition really needs to be stated clearly. And number two is what is the intention of the the, the origin of the law? What is the purpose? What are they after? Because we could end up being like the Outlast property that got through and we ended up with what I think it was posts. That's all they ended up keeping at the at that building up there. Remember, it was just posts out of all of what they had.
Not much of the posts. But there was no language, as you said, there's no language, no law to prevent them from doing that.
Right.
It seems like, it seems like the intention is to do that. It's, it's just, you just, the building could be totally gone under this one, Scott. That's the way I read it.
That, that is how I read it too, Sal. The other end of this, which we did not have.
Dave, if you don't mind, but it's not the definition of the law. By any, by any Webster's, by Wikipedia, read the definition of the law. It says it has to have those values to it. Structural, historical, I mean, I should say architectural or historical. Those are some of the issues. Those are the things that you, you got to look at, you know, and what do you have if you're not going to build them down? And I'm not opposed to it. I think it's a great idea, but I just want to make it clear for any, any other board coming in after us saying, well, what was their intention to this?
Yeah, I, I think, I think, you know, and to Sal's point, I think the it is true that the law is drafted. Somebody could take this right down to the foundation. It would be limited to reconstruction based on the existing footprint if they wanted to take advantage of the overlay district regulations. But there really are other criteria that, that's, you know, I mean, it's got to be, it's got to be non-residential. That's one thing. It's got to be served by existing water and sewer. That's another thing. Has to be on a quarter acre or more of land. That's another requirement. And, but, but, you know, really be beyond that. And it needs to propose a mixture of uses that is residential and commercial. So, yeah, those are sort of the defining points of what is proposed. It doesn't include, it's not restricted to historical structures. I mean, you know, when you're talking about historical, are you talking about structures that are on the registry? Are you talking about structures that are over a certain age? You know, who makes that call? You know, so, but, but the question of definition is important. What is underutilized? What do you, what do you, what do you mean? You know, is it, is it a vacant building? Is it one that's not, you know, at its highest and best value? Who's making that call? That's Dave, Dave Barton as the code office. Now, and, and how do you put sideboards around that? You know, you can define adaptive reuse any way you want. You, you can have an historic component to it, but you don't have to. You know, you can say it's certain types of buildings that it's just these old, old coolers or old storage facilities or you know, I mean, you could define it that way as well. Had it in your law that it was, you know, certain addresses. And that, and that seemed a little bit odd. You know, just to call out because then what do you do if you want, if somebody else has another building that's like that? So sending up those parameters of, of the definition of the buildings and properties that you're thinking about reusing. And then what are the goals for those buildings? The goals are, if it's a, you know, old cooler and somebody wants to come in and turn it into a coffee shop and apartments upstairs, that, that's a good thing. And maybe, maybe that's something you want to incentivize. You know, regardless of its historic status, regardless of how much of the building's taken down. You know, I, that, I'm just putting it out there and things for you all to be thinking about.
A lot of what I came up with was from other, from when we first went through this, when after that one project had gone through and we were trying to figure out if, if we could redo the adaptive reuse. And I think at that point, we were all frustrated with, you know, what is the real meaning? And we had taken a course. You know, it so happened to me that was what they were having a course on. We all went to it. So and I know the county's going to have a question with this, being on the county planning board, they're going to ask these questions. They're going to bring up the definition as it's read right now, not what we're making it or not what we want to re-derive the adaptive reuse law as, but what it is today, if you look it up in Webster's Dictionary or something of that nature. So that's why I'm asking the question. If you're going to re-establish the name or the use, I'm going to say the definition of adaptive reuse, well, then that's clear. That's fine. And I interpreted it the same way Sal did, that it was coming straight down. But that's why knowing what the law read and what we're looking to do now, they're two different things. It's not what is really out there as far as adaptive reuse. So I just, intention is a big thing, though. I mean, that's, what are the intentions of the creation of this law? What was the purpose? And, you know.
And the old days, Scott, as you recall, the code was very focused on the building itself. The code now splits and talking about the building and the property. And just so you all are aware, if you haven't read it yet, the, the density is limited to the underlying zoning. And most of the old properties are in the R corridor zone. So if you have one acre, you get four dwelling units. If you want more, you get to go negotiate with the town board for what we have in our code for incentive zoning. So there's, so in the old code, there was no, and it was frustration for me because I took some of the heat for it and I'm sure you guys as well. And in fact, I know you did. There was no, there was no real limitation because you could sort of, there was no language that pointed to here's how you get to how many units you can have. Now there is, and there's actually negotiated space created in the proposed law where they have to figure out, what's the town board, how much they're willing to spend for the extra units. I think right now it's twenty thousand dollars per unit. So, you know, if you've got four acres and you get four units and you want twenty, that's a big number you have to, you have to assign. And this will speak to some of the issues that we struggled with back then as well about coverage. Right? If you, if you're going to spend that kind of money, you're going to have less parking because you're not going to want to spend that money. Maybe we incentivize more green spaces. Maybe, maybe the town board and planning board can figure out a way to, you know, build that into how much, how many units they can get. It, it, in my opinion, it's a strong piece. It gives this board more authority over, you know, or limits the applicant as to what they can ask you for, which we did not have before. And that was frustration then in a big way. So, anyway, that's my two cents and, you know, but I, so my last question, I suppose, that I have for you guys tonight is how do you want to handle getting comments? Do you want to send them all to, to Paul or I or Scott and then he can forward them or you want to have another? to, to, uh, Paul or I or Scott, and then he can forward them, or you want to have another meeting, or how do you want to handle?
Well, public on the sixteenth?
Yeah.
Why don't we meet on the tenth, this way it gives us time, and then the, gives the town board time to, um, review our comments.
If, if you do that, you have to meet before seven o'clock, I have ZVA that night.
I could, you could do that.
Yeah, I don't care. I'm here anyway, so it's six to one, okay?
Larry, what was your comment?
I think we heard a lot of good comments right here tonight. And if we could get our secretary to either record them or type them, and send them to the town board right away to give them a start on some of our problems.
I think I agree with you, and then if we, we may not have to have this special meeting, just maybe just write up the.
We hit most of the things right now.
And, and not to put you on the spot, though, Larry, you were here for much of the adaptive reuse, you were one of the members on the board, I think I am, you are. I don't think anybody else was on the board, Sal, you may have been on there at the time, I'm not sure.
Oh, that was, that was already, because you did that, uh, High Bridge one, before I came on the plane, that was before I was on the plane.
I was on for High Bridge, I came on right after that, so that, this was a big deal.
With one of them too.
But do you have any input on it, Larry, that you want to discuss, or re-spark my memory of what was going on?
I think there's good on both sides. I can see in some cases taking a building down, but don't change the footprint, but you got to bring back the good qualities of the old building. I've been in the old building, all the irons and poles stuck in the walls.
Right, but.
Yeah, but it's a good point, but what about like churches and the bank, and like beautiful buildings that we don't want to lose? Um, we wouldn't, we want to see those ripped down.
If I could say it though, but this is what we're authorizing, we're authorizing the demolition down to the footprint, down to the foundation.
Well, I mean, maybe we can make a, a comment that, uh, there should be something put in there to protect those significant buildings or something, I don't know, something.
But that's part of where I was coming from with the structural, or, I mean, architectural or historical value. I mean, let's look at the Methodist church, it looks like it, it, so it may be up for sale someday soon, you know what I mean? Are we going to let that building go away? You know what I mean, and somebody put apartment buildings?
I don't want to see that, I don't want to see that.
So, so that's what I meant by that, and I know that the, the county planning board is going to say the same thing, because we've seen it come before us in other towns. And it, they rely a lot on what the definition, the definition is, and what is the intention of the, the, the redevelopment of that law, why, or what, what is their, their purpose, what? Because later on, we've even said it, well, what's the, what, what was the intention of this law when it was drafted, when it was made? So define that.
Can I ask a question, is, is that something that, um, with some architectural consider? I mean, remember, this is a special use permit, so it's something that the planning board could deny. If there were some architectural, uh, guidelines built into the regulations, would that be helpful as an option? Um, because what you're kind of balancing against is, you know, and just having talked a bit with the supervisor, is you do want to provide some flexibility, you know, so that somebody's going to, and, and to provide some incentive, so that somebody will come in and, and do something with these wet elephants, and, and that is the balance. But you are, you are running into a potential, um, you know, there, there are issues like, like you guys are talking about that, that could occur.
Under special use permit.
Was looking at it.
Um, Paul, under special use permit, could we as a board, you know, institute those things? So if it did come across us that it was the Methodist church, we'll say, well, no, we'd really like to see the architectural value stay with that building, and we realize you might want to put a little walk mall in, under, downstairs, and maybe a couple of apartments upstairs above it, we're all good with that, but we really want to see it maintained as what simulates the church, or you just re-repurpose the, the building, you, you know what I'm saying? And, and in other cases, say, no, we don't want to see it knocked down.
You can't, you can't deny a special use permit, uh, um, if it doesn't fit in with the neighborhood.
Okay, I mean, I got you.
That's a potential basis for denial of, um, you know, architectural, um, sideboards around the, um, you know, what happens in terms of the reuse of a building or reuse of a property. Um, that, that's maybe a little bit stronger or a little bit more specific than the special use permit standards, if that makes sense.
Well, it's better, it's knowing that we're, it's not so defined as knocking it down and reusing the footprint, you know, that to me is, you know, I, I, I'm not too keen on that.
Yeah, I don't know if we want to incentivize, I mean, if somebody can always buy a building and knock it down, that's their property, but I mean, uh, we don't necessarily want to incentivize ripping down the Methodist church, I mean, so, at this, I, I think we just raise the issue and say that maybe some kind of, um, safeguard should be put in, and then the town board can kick it around from there, but uh, at least that'd be, at least they'll be aware of our, of our worry.
Yeah, sure, that's, it's fair.
And just the idea that it's coming back to the planning board and going to be something that people will be able to reuse, I am for it right off the bat, because it's something that has not been instituted for, or, or, or used in the last, what is it? Four years, I think it is, three or four years, so.
Five, I think it's almost five at this point.
There you go, so, so, I mean, I'm happy and, and I think it's a great idea that they're doing it, I just, like I said, the concerns I have are mine, and I just wanted to vent those out there so that we're all understanding where I'm coming from, so.
They're all good ideas today.
Bill, Larry, Franco.
Do you all want to get the, have the draft minutes done? Do you want to have them circulated, uh, and, and then send them to the town board, or do you want to just send them along, um, in rough copy?
Send them rough copy first, at least they've got something to work with. Larry's suggestion was great, and if we come up with any more, we can just list them, you know, send them to, um, to me, like, me, Paul and Dave, I think it'd be fine. Um, as long as all three of us have them, but if you have them, Jerry, if you don't mind, read up on it a little bit, because I'm sure you have some things you want to put to it also. Um, and, and get them back to me, or all three of us, we can go over them and, and we'll definitely push them forward for, for certain. Franco, you got anything on it?
No, not really, what I've been doing is I've been looking at like, um, different towns and what, how, how they have adaptive reuse. Um, spelled out in their code, and just trying to put some stuff together, so. I think what we just need to do is just tighten it up a lot. I mean, it's pretty vague.
Right. Right. So, um, that, and that ends that discussion, so the other discussion I have with Sal, thank you for updating your, your, um, your paperwork on your credits that you have going towards the town planning board. I don't know, we're going to have to check with Sarah and see what is, is eligible or what we need that, you know, what's, what's acceptable, so I don't, I don't know Sal of everything that you had on there, but I'm sure they'll, they'll evaluate those and make sure that.
So here's the fun part, Scott, um, you all decide.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, there's not, there's no, uh, there's no credit police.
So it's not, nothing has to be a credit.
The town board is effectively the, the credit police.
Oh, that's fine, and it's, and I don't want to be a police, that's not what I'm doing here. Mine is more so just keep up with it, so that we, nobody can say to us from any other board, hey, you're not holding your end. Um, you know, no, we don't want to reinstitute your, your membership on the board, so. But if you get it, send it off to Sarah. Um, copy me on it too, and I already forwarded yours off to Sarah, Paul, um, Sal, just so you know. Alright, so, um, but everybody else, if you can do it, that's fine, alrighty? Anybody else have anything they want to bring up, any questions?
Uh, the board knows about Carl's, uh, loss.
Thank you, yeah, I was just going to mention that, um.
Oh, I did not know this.
Mrs. De Lorenzo had passed.
Oh, man.
He's definitely in, um, in, in our prayers.
Oh.
Um, he's, you know, he's, he won't be with us for a little while, he's taking some time off. So, um, you know, send our condolences to, um, our fellow board member and to his family on his loss of his wife, so, um, just want to bring that up and, you know, this, it's a sad thing for him, it really is, so. Um, I've called him, reach out to him if he needed anything, let us know. And, um, that's what I could say on that, so.
Yeah.
Alright, gentlemen. Anything else at all?
Well.
We're good, motion to close.
Motion.
Thank you, and, uh, we don't need a second, so thank you, appreciate it.
Okay.
Have a good night, we'll see you all.
Good night, guys.
Enjoy your time.
Thank you.
Enjoy the one.
Okay.